Yes.
Okay. Map zero six two point zero, parcel zero zero four six, North Andover, Mass. Oh one eight four five. In the R one zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four, B three A, for construction of an in-ground pool in the R one zoning district. A variance is requested under section one ninety-five four, point one nine B, three A, Watership Protection District, non-discharge buffer zoning of the zoning bylaws. Application supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. From the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven thirty AM. The order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Cock Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Thank you for that very dramatic greeting, Mr. Cushing.
My pleasure.
And with that, this, uh, this, uh, hearing is been opened, if you would, just your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Greg Hockmoth. I work at Williams and Sporages, we have an office in Middleton. And I'm here representing the applicants Maria and Anthony DiMarco for the zoning variance. Applied for their property at sixty-two Sailway.
Do you have a signed paper from them, they, you can represent them?
I do, that was, um, that was submitted.
Back in the package.
Yep.
It's in the package?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so Anthony and Maria DiMarco, they purchased a property at sixty-two Sailway. Does everybody know where Sailway is?
Right after the country club, right?
That's right. Uh, it's, it's not that old, I think it was the early nineties when the subdivision was developed. This is the second to last house on the left as you head down towards the cul-de-sac. It's not on the water, but it's well within the watershed, uh, district. What the DiMarcos would like to do is to construct an in-ground swimming pool in their rear yard. As you know, uh, there's, there's certain offsets from the lake itself and from, uh, the wetlands within the watershed. The pool is proposed outside of the non-discharge zone from the lake itself. But it is proposed within the non-discharge zone from a small wetland that exists in the front of the property off, off Sailway. There's no location on the lot that would allow a swimming pool to go in that would, um, not require a variance because the entire property is within one of the zones from, from the lake and/or the, the wetland out front.
Well, what is the, the required offset from the wetland?
So, we're, we're not within a hundred feet of the wetlands, uh, so we don't require a permit through the Conservation Commission.
Sure.
But we do require a watershed, uh, special permit because we're in the non-discharge zone.
Right, but how wide is that non-discharge zone?
So it's, it goes out to four hundred feet.
Okay.
So from the wetland itself, it's, it's between, uh, a hundred and fifty feet and four hundred feet is a non-discharge zone.
Can you just show us where it is on there?
I can.
Yep.
So this light blue line is the non-disturbance zone from the wetland. Uh, the non-discharge zone is, is out here, it falls on the, uh, butter's property. So we're within that one hundred and fifty and, and four hundred foot zone, we're, we're almost two hundred feet from the wetland itself, it's a hundred and ninety-six feet. When we first, uh-
Where is it from the lake?
So the, the four hundred foot zone from the lake is here. So we've got about thirty-five plus feet to, to play with. When we first were approached by the clients, I reached out to Gene Enright down at the planning department, I talked to Gene about the permitting path that would be required. That's where we learned of the need for a zoning variance as well. Any new structure within the, uh, watershed district requires a variance from this, from this board. Gene had, uh, turned me on to a project that was approved in two thousand seventeen on Great Pond Road, which was very similar, except they were tearing down an old house, building a new house as well as a swimming pool. We wanted to propose everything that they did as far as mitigation for increase in impervious, uh, provide some stormwater management. Uh, the prior project requested, uh, well, propose an infiltration trench around the perimeter of the pool patio, uh, which is what we've done. Uh, the existing impervious surface from the rooftop of the house, uh, goes into a subsurface infiltration system which is located here. That's why we had to position the pool slightly where you see it. They originally, originally wanted it here, but there's a, currently a stormwater management area there for the roof. The infiltration trench should be proposed around the perimeter of the pool. It'd be a two-foot deep trench filled with stone, and the soils out here are moderately well-drained. So it should be more than, more than sufficient to handle, uh, most storm events and get the water back into the ground. There is a non-backwash filtration system proposed for the pool, so it would be a cartridge filter, so there'd be no need to backwash towards wetland resource areas. Or, um, you know, I guess the threat of any backwash reaching the lake itself would be eliminated as a result of that.
Now, I, I assume that by non-discharge zone, the, the concern for a swimming pool would be chlorinated water, right? Is that the idea that that would come into the, into the wetland?
So the, the pool itself is permitted within the non-discharge zone-
Okay.
-as well as single-family houses as far as the planning board's concerned. But when you go back and forth through the regulations, it, it takes you back to that section that says any new structure requires a variance.
Okay.
But the non-discharge zone, I think it was really intended for transfer stations, uh, you know, large types of uses that would provide a lot more, uh, potential contaminants than an in-ground swimming pool in the back of, of somebody's yard.
In a similar vein, just to get a handle on the procedural stuff here. So the use I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say is that the use of a swimming pool is pretty much as of right in the zone. You just have to get a variance for any new structure. And then I heard you earlier say that you're gonna need a special permit, and the special permit is for what and from whom?
So it's a watershed special permit from the planning board, uh, which we've applied for, and we're going, uh, July sixteenth. We wanted to come before the zoning board first, before, uh, going before, before the planning board.
So the variance is for what, as in four hundred feet of that wetland?
Uh, so the variance is just for a new structure within the non-discharge zone of, uh, the wetland.
Okay.
So if you were building a shed, we would be doing the same thing?
If it was bigger than eight by ten.
That's right, that's right, it's, it's, um-
And you have to realize too, on here, it's, a lot of the patio as well is considered the structure-
Because it's impermeable surface.
Correct.
Right.
And that regulation that defines structure is very clear. It includes swimming pools, and it says not limited to, and it lists a bunch of different types of structures. Uh, it's my understanding that it wasn't, um, it wasn't something that was looked at as closely in the past. But the building department is now looking at this as they should because the regulation's very clear. And it is considered a structure for the time being anyways. It's not a very large pool. It's, it's a small kidney-shaped pool, we've tried to tuck it in such that most of the trees are gonna stay. I colored all the trees up just so you could see how wooded it is. Um, and the entire front yard is woods too, it's a very modest-sized backyard, a thin strip of grass in the front. It's a gigantic house, uh, but the pool itself is, is rather small.
So I'm looking at the order of conditions from the original, um, development, is there anything that restricts swimming pools?
No.
Okay, it's just, it's, it's cited, but it doesn't give me a list of, uh, conditions.
Yeah, there were some covenants in the subdivision that prohibited above-ground swimming pools in a lot of the standard, uh-
Fence?
Yeah, yeah, there's a fence, there's a fence proposed around the pool, but we're gonna be able to weave it in and out of the, the trees. And there's no proposal to deforest the backyard and-
I mean, you have to by law fence the pool anyways.
Yep, yep, and there is a fence, we're, we're gonna use probably seventy percent of the fence that's there, and then just kick it out in the back to go around the swimming pool if it is approved.
Do the regulations say anything about the, um, uh, construction methods and, you know, having stockpiles of excavated soil and erosion control and that sort of thing?
They don't, um, and so there, I should say there's really no potential for any erosion or sedimentation into the adjacent resource areas or the lake. The pool's proposed in a little bit of a low spot in the backyard. But there will be the need to create a temporary access road and a temporary stockpile area, um, for the, for the pool excavation.
So, the, you have a, um, you mentioned the trench, and it has an operation and maintenance plan that, um, that requires infiltration trench to be inspected and cleaned every six months after, and after every major storm event of half an inch or more.
Right.
So that's, that's an intense plan. I mean, yeah, that's something that's gonna, you know, require a lot of vigilance on the homeowner's part. How, you know, how do we ensure that that is, that is adhered to? I mean, that is, is there, I mean, is it obvious with the trench when that is not being followed? Like, you know, in terms of if there's too much rainwater, like, has it become basically unpleasant for them to have so that they would want to do that? Or like, how does this, I guess my worry is, is that they, that they would build this trench and then not maintain it the way that it's supposed to be done. And I don't know if there's any way to, there's not gonna be any easy way to enforce it, I'm certainly not gonna go into their backyard and, and call them out on it.
Right, so, so good question. The language in our O and M was taken right from, uh, T E C consultant's, uh, peer review letter for the project that was on Great Pond Road. It was what the planning board wanted to see, so we included the same language. It's a little aggressive for an infiltration trench around a swimming pool.
Sure.
With these infiltration trenches, it's really easy to tell when they're not working. You get water ponding on top of the fil-, so there's a layer of filter fabric on top of the stone that you don't see. Then there's a decorative stone typically placed on top. And if you start getting ponding or puddling within the trench itself, and it's only a foot wide-
Yeah, yeah.
-it tells you that it's, it's probably clogged with pine needles, leaves, or some type of bark mulch or landscape debris. You simply rake off decorative stone, remove the sediment, and then put everything back. It's very easy to maintain. But water's gonna seek its own path, right, and it's flat. So if you do have one section that fails, it's just gonna go along until it infiltrates.
Okay.
Uh, the soils out here are great, the fact that there's a subsurface infiltration system right next to this, it's gonna be a lot lower, it's working fine. Tells us that this trench is gonna work, work well. But, to your point, how do you police it? It's a good question.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think the homeowners would not want their property to-
Well, and the flooding, it helps, right?
Right.
It makes sense, it's, it's that it makes it like unpleasant enough that they're gonna wanna self-maintain.
They're putting in this beautiful pool and all this landscaping-
Right.
You don't want, you wanna protect your investment, you have to have faith in a homeowner that they're gonna wanna protect their investment.
Right, and to be honest, without the trench, I suspect sheet flow off that patio would have plenty of time to infiltrate through that lawn before even getting close to any of the adjacent resource areas, and certainly the pond. The pond's well over four hundred feet away. Um, and, and there is a developed property down here that's actually on the pond. And the grade rises up before you get to that, that property.
Lake?
Lake, that's right.
So if they have to pump the water down to the pool, uh, where do they discharge that to?
So I think it would be appropriate to include a condition, if this is approved, that does not allow any type of de-watering from the pool or emptying of the, of the pool, uh, via any type of sump pump across the property. Typically, it's either pumped into a truck, or sometimes it's pumped out into the road where it gets into the stormwater management system after it's had plenty of time to allow the chemicals to, to dissipate. It doesn't take long for chlorine to, to, um, leave a swimming pool.
So, this is gonna be chlorine, correct, is that?
I'm not sure.
I mean, today's environment, it seems like salt seems to be more prevalent than chlorine. Chlorine seem, I mean, so that's, that's why I asked, are they going chlorine? But then secondly, uh, if you look at just the rain that we've had and you have a pool, you need to reduce the water level within your pool because the rain has created that environment. So this quote discharge is, it's gonna happen, it's gonna need to happen. And I would question whether going to the street or, I mean, I, usually the equipment has a device that allows the water to be backwashed out of the pool into some area. So I'm, as I, I think, is it chlorine? And does the equipment allow for the discharge of the, of, uh, the water in the pool when, if it's too high from rain or a storm?
So, so, I'm sorry?
So I don't think our bylaws restrict the kind of chemicals that can go into a pool or not, or a structure. I don't, I know sometimes they restrict, um, what kind of lawn, um-
Pesticide.
Pesticides and all that, but I don't think the restrictions of, and, and I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think our bylaws, I don't think as a board-
Yeah.
We can restrict, you can only-
Well, I think this is-
I think that there's a difference, and I, I just bring it up because of the, if we're gonna be, if we're talking about discharging water, there's probably a difference between saline and chlorine, and that's why, that's why, I mean, so it would be-
I, I think to Steve's point, you know, this property, the, the, the limit of the non-discharge zone is four hundred feet. They're asking for the pool to be at two hundred feet. I think it is reasonable to say that if we are going to permit a variance to allow it to be much closer to a wetland, that we ask for extra protections, which is of course why he has suggested a trench, right? Like, that's, that's the whole reason, because if this was outside the discharge zone, something like that trench would not be required. And, um, so I think Steve's asking if similarly we wanna talk about what is used in the pool as a way to mitigate the fact that it's closer to the wetland than would normally be allowed.
I think I'd be comfortable with if you cannot drain and sump pump, you know, and all that. I, I, I have a hard time restricting a homeowner to say you can't, you know, um, make your pool pretty, you know, make it nice and blue and sparkly by putting just salt or, I mean, because I'm, I'm not versed in what goes in a pool and what doesn't. Do, do you know what I mean?
Yep.
And I don't know if anyone on the board is.
I think it's just a question of how you discharge it depending on the tenant.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think that that's, that was, uh, my comments are related to, I heard you talk about discharging, you, you gave two examples, discharging into the road, and you mentioned another method, which to me doesn't seem very, doesn't seem practical for the pool owner.
It's only practical if you're de-watering the whole pool to patch a leak or fix a crack, and you wanna return the water within the next couple days. You've probably seen those water for rent trucks driving around.
In Middleton. H two O in Middleton.
You know, a lot of people will, uh, they won't wanna fill up their pool using their spigot or well, uh, because it's very costly.
Right.
So a lot of times they will de-water an entire pool into a truck. But if you're just taking off an inch or two from a recent downpour, no, they wouldn't pump it into a truck. But, what we have done in the past is propose drywells next to pools to discharge any type of backwash into a drywall. And we just happen to have a pretty good-sized infiltration area right next to this for the rooftop. So it would be easy enough just to put another port into that to allow, uh, the property owners to de-water if need be, to take it off an inch or two, whatever it is, and just pump it into the infiltration area that's next to the pool.
So is there be a tank that you can then pour some of the water into back and forth?
Uh, no, it would just be, so there's a, it's, it's, you've probably seen those half, half-moon, uh, large black, uh, plastic, um, chambers that go underneath parking lots and whatnot for stormwater. They're called infiltrator chambers, um, or cultech chambers. Those exist right next to this proposed swimming pool. So there'd be, there'd be plenty of room to throw an inch of water into that. You know, I looked at my pool this morning, and, and, you know, I have to take a little water out of it because we've gone, it's got an inch of rain last night. Uh, but no, I don't know what type of chemicals they're putting in here, but if it's chlorine, if it's salt, uh, whatever it is, it would be safe to pump that into a drywall, or in this case, the subsurface infiltration system next to the pool.
Is the storm, storm drain out in the road?
Uh, it looks like, looked like country drainage to me, so it probably wouldn't be appropriate just to let water sheet flow out into Sailway. Not to mention, it's a very long way from the pool out to the road here, it's a long meandering driveway.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'd be more comfortable with, with having that drywall be a, be a way to pump back and forth.
Yep, it's easy enough to put another port, just a piece of PVC going into the ground. And it's something they probably wanna do anyways, rather than trying to pump it onto their lawn.
So, this is supposed to be a variance, and my, you know, understanding is that with that, it's supposed to be, you know, we're, we're providing an exception usually for some kind of hardship that you have that is specific to the property. You know, that is specific to the, uh, location or proportions of the property. What is that in this case? I mean, I, I know you said that you would not be able to put a pool inside your property within the rules, but I'm not sure that that is the kind of hardship we're looking for.
Well, that, that is the hardship in this case. There's nowhere on the lot that we could propose a swimming pool that would, um, not require a variance. And the watershed around Lake Chickwick is fairly large, as you know. And to prohibit swimming pools within that watershed, um, I think would be a challenge. And not to mention, it's, it was just, it was just done last year. Um, I guess, you know, impact-wise, the lake, the wetlands, a swimming pool in the backyard, it should have zero impact on the adjacent resource areas and certainly the lake.
What's the material used to build in the pool?
Uh, it's gonna be gunite, and the patio is supposed to be bluestone or some type of paver surface. Which, you know, people say it's permeable, but it's, it's more close to pavement in my opinion. Water doesn't typically go through pavers. Which, we have the trench around it.
Anything else? Put yourself any, I think the hot bench might have interrupted the presentation, is to, anything else to, uh, to add?
Uh, no, not unless, uh, the board has any more questions for me.
I think I'll probably just, uh, explore the, um, the, the conditions that were, uh, kind of, you know, explored a little bit earlier. I, I think one of the things I heard you say is that it would not be unreasonable to impose a condition regarding the de-watering of it. And I'm, I'm not sure exactly how to write something like that. Like, the, the, the condition, what, uh, you know, because I am a layperson in spite of being on the zoning board, I mean, I would write something like, no, no, uh, de-watering discharge on, on site, that it all must be, we're not talking about the minor discharges for, you know, the, the inch of rain kind of thing, I'm talking about the, uh, the entirety of the pool that you had mentioned, that scale. What's the, what's the, the right way, the clearest way to write that?
So in the past, I've seen conditions, uh, for situations like this that, um, that read, uh, you know, prior to any discharge of pool water, uh, from the pool itself, the pool shall be allowed to sit for at least seventy-two hours to ensure chemicals within the pool are diluted. And in this case, you could also impose a condition or a requirement to, uh, de-water or, um, yeah, de-water from the pool into the existing subsurface infiltration system for the rooftop. Or a separate drywall, if they decided to put in a separate drywall.
I mean, that's a, there's a word for that question there, so, um, the, the system that is there, it, what is its size compared to what's required for the size of the roof that's next to it?
So it doesn't store water?
Okay.
It's designed to capture water and allow it to infiltrate into the ground.
Okay.
And unless you were trying to de-water the pool at the same time the roof was dumping into it-
Right.
-it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
If it was a subsurface detention area-
Right.
-then we'd have to make sure it was sized appropriately.
Gotcha, okay.
And I, I'm guessing that the planning board's gonna have some similar conditions in their decision? And I did hear from Monica today, she told me, uh, engineering is gonna be reviewing this, uh, and providing input as well. So they'll review the trench and the design and-
So now what happens if, um, their conditions overlap with our conditions? I mean, you're gonna have to come back to one of us, so hopefully they're cohesive with, um, your conditions, you want for both boards to decide.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing that there're gonna be a lot more conditions from the planning board.
Correct, but specifically these two, I mean, are concerned, it's the watershed, you're in there, you're asking for this. So, I mean, I'm sure they're gonna say, okay, X, Y, Z, A, B, C, B, 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 A, and, you know. So... Just trying to think how to word it, so it's-
Would careful ones and more restrictive would probably be-
Well, I was gonna say, can we put a condition if another board? And it saves them from having to come back.
I mean, if, if we were closer to the lake or closer to the wetland or in the no dis-, no disturb zone or the conservation zone, I think it would be, it would be a lot more, it would be a lot more, um, challenging to propose a swimming pool. Uh, we're in the outskirts of the non-discharge zone in a hollow behind the lot. The reality is, water isn't gonna reach the lake, it's not gonna reach. The house is there, it's, it would have, water would have to flow uphill to get to this wetland.
This is a, a question that may not be answerable by anybody in the room, but do we, I, before this meeting, I had looked up the, not, idea of a non-discharge zone because I had never particularly heard of it. It seems to be pretty unique to our bylaws, like, I tried to look around, I've not seen other places that had similar ones. There's the, the non-disturb zone that goes out two, goes out either a hundred or two hundred feet is, is common for a lot of municipalities. But I've not seen it, this specific language of a non-discharge zone that's much larger.
It's very specific to North Andover because that is our drinking water, so they're very, very-
Gotcha.
-conservative with bodies of water that-
So it's really because of Lake Coachewick that-
Correct.
-all of this inflow will exist, okay, that makes sense.
Which is our source of-
Well, of course, yes.
That's my take on it, I don't know if there's, if that's the accurate answer, but I would think, I would probably be ninety-eight percent sure.
So does it only apply to, uh, wetlands that are within the, I guess, watershed district?
Very, very restrictive in-
Versus a wetland that's outside the watershed.
Or if there's a new, or a fraud, that's different too.
Turdles.
Of turtles.
There was a huge turtle on the road the other day.
Did you squish it?
So I have the prohibited uses, which I can read to you.
Sure.
Construction of any septic system. Construction of any new permanent structure or expansion of an existing structure, except as allowed by special permit, which is why we have to go for the watershed special permit. And then the big one, the use, the use of or method of application of any lawn care or garden product, fertilizer, pesticide, herbicide, that may contribute to the degradation of the public water supply. Um, and then underneath that, it says the use of lawn care or garden products that are not organic or slow-release nitrogen. So I think they're worried about the phosphates and all the bad stuff that's in fertilizers.
Sure, yep.
But you can't put fish guts on your lawn, and that's what they use for organic products. Just an FYI.
It's the technical term, fish guts.
Chum, chum.
Chum.
So just to, to be, uh, so your conditions would be, prior to any major discharge, pool to sit up to seventy-two hours to ensure, I couldn't write quick enough.
Dilution chemicals.
Dilution, di-
The dilution or dissipation is the-
Which one?
Because the, it's not gonna dilute by sitting, it's gonna degrade, right?
What did you say?
I, I think either one would be appropriate.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would say degradation of chemicals.
Oh, and that's the third word now.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be a chemist here.
Actually, no, it's not true, because if you don't chlorine, if you don't put chlorine in a pool, it ends up turning green. So the chlorine does go away eventually.
Right, it evaporates, it either, it either degrades or evaporates off, but it doesn't dilute. Dilute would imply that more wa- Dilute would imply that more water comes in for the same amount of chlorine that is already there.
It dissipates.
There you go.
Dissipates.
Learn something new every day.
Of chemicals, and to be taken off-site. I think we clarified that.
For, for a major de-water. Oh, major de-water.
The idea was that it would be...
Prior to any major discharge, pool to sit up to 72 hours to ensure dissipate, dissipation, is that a word?
Dissipation.
Dissipation, yep.
Of surge.
Of chemicals in, to be taken, in water to be taken off-site, or...
Wait, if you're waiting for it to dissipate, then you don't, why do you need it to still be taken off-site?
The chemicals have to dissipate, and then...
Right, but then why does that water have to be taken off-site?
It's still a lot of water to dump into the soil.
Okay. Okay.
I have no problem with it going off-site.
A gunite pool isn't going to need to be drained, but, okay.
Crack.
Except when it needs to be drained.
And they won't have, they won't deal with it.
Paint it, some people paint them.
Okay.
Well, when it comes winter time, they, a third, two-thirds of the water's going to be dropped down, they're not going to leave the pool full in the winter.
Two-thirds? Is that what they do?
No, you don't drop it two-thirds. You drop it below the skimmers to push out the skimmers.
It depends upon where the pipes are, I mean, so probably half the pool will go out. It all depends upon where the, where the, you have to get the water below where...
The skimmer.
So all of the...
The jets in the skimmer.
Yeah, and so, so you're going to, that's, bottom line is, it's a material amount of water.
I would say it's enough, it's not, it's not so much that it can't be put into the infiltration system, but that's, I mean, based off of most pools where you're looking at your skimmers and your drainer, you need to go below that so that they can push out the water from the pipes, blow out the pipes so that there's no water in, so they don't crack during the winter. That's as much as you're going, and it's not a huge pool, so you're not going to have skimmers 10 feet deep.
And typically, at the end of the season, too, you stop treating the pool, you lower the water, and then once the water's lowered, then you throw in some chemicals to winterize
it. Yeah.
So it would be essentially clean water at that point. Especially if a condition requires it to be.
And what was the other one, the second one? The water of any minor, I can't read your writing. To put into a...
Minor discharge into the existing subsurface.
To existing...
Infiltration, sub-cha, or detention.
Subsurface infiltration.
Existing subsurface infiltration, or a newly installed drywall.
Which one do we want?
Well, can't you give them the options?
I think it's giving home options.
Newly installed, what?
Drywall.
Drywall.
You're just exhibiting your flexibility to the homeowner in this very restrictive environment.
So flexible.
Any further thoughts, questions from the board? Not hearing any.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, so the public hearing, it's closed, now the board shall deliberate. Thoughts from the board prior to a motion?
I think the two conditions are reasonable. I don't think you really need much more.
I haven't heard anyone on the board, you know, screaming and yelling about this invasion into the non-discharge zone. Certainly don't have anybody from the gallery kicking and screaming, and I have not heard from Gene suggesting as much. So if the experts are, the persons more expert than myself aren't kicking and screaming, then, you know, based on the reasonableness of Mr., I'm sorry, Hockmuth or...
Hockmuth.
Hockmuth.
Yep.
Mr. Hockmuth's presentation, the thoroughness of his, his research and the adoption of previously imposed conditions certainly satisfies the needs that I have to manage this project.
I think, you know, my, my only, my only slight concern really at this point is just whether, you know, whether or not this qualifies as, as a variance. I think I'd be much more comfortable if there were a special permit, in the sense that, like, I don't see anything particularly unusual about the shape or distribution of the property, and so it's, but it's very clearly within the zone that you're not supposed to be building things. So like, I don't know, I don't know quite what I think about that. I, in every other respect, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the, the changes that have, you know, the, not changes, the, the conditions that have been proposed. I think they are good ones, I think they make sense, and, and I think, for the most part, like, I'm not super worried about the water quality. I'll be interested to hear what the engineers say when, when they present that to the planning board, but, but we don't have that right now. But, that's my only, my only real concern.
A variance is three conditions, it's soil, shape, and topography. So, the soil, I mean, could also be restricted because it's wet.
Yeah.
The shape, it's a donut, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Soil's all, you know, so, and I think we're restricted because we're saying, we don't get to choose, well, we're going to, you know what, we're going to give you a special permit instead because we like that instead. We're, we're bound to the bylaws to say, there, he's here because he's requesting...
Right, no, I...
Because our bylaw.
I'm with you, and that's why, like, I, I have a little bit of hesitation there, is I just don't, under those three conditions, I don't know how this property fits in that rubric.
Well, hardship is a little bit, so soil shape topography is generally the, it's just like the rule of thumb lexicons, the shorthand that we all use, because it certainly covers 98% of the prospective hardships.
Yeah.
But the legal realities are, is that it's, it's a little bit bigger than merely soil shape topography.
Sure.
Certainly the restrictions that the town has put on the, you know, that the zoning code has put on the land. And there are certainly cases where, you know, financial hardship is something that can qualify, you know, with, with other, with other variables, I guess. So I hear you loud and clear, this doesn't necessarily fit into soil shape topography as we ordinarily think about it.
Yeah.
But in the overlay of the zoning code and, and that, there being that other 2% of prospective hardships.
Yeah.
This lands in a hardship category. Reasonable, they certainly disagree on whether or not that is, that is one that everybody should agree on. That's where, where I'm coming from on that. Hear you loud and clear though, Michael.
Great. Since no more discussion, I'll make a variance. I mean, I'll make a motion and a variance, too. I'm going to make a motion to grant a variance under section 195-4.19B3A in the watershed protection district, non-discharge buffer zone of designing zoning bylaws for the property located of, at Maria and Anthony Dimakos, for property at 62 Silway, map 062.0, parcel 0046, North Endover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district, to grant, I'm sorry, to grant the variance, and I'm going to cite a packet from May 16th, 2019, that shows all the D restrictions and, yep, that. And a plan dated Andrew's Pool, of the plan, of the pool, I'm sorry, for Dimakos residents by Andrew's Pool, page number one, site plan by Williams Brages. Am I saying it right? I said it wrong, right?
Sporages.
Sporages, I see it all the time.
Everyone says it wrong.
And I say it wrong. Property dated, I have my glasses on, too, but maybe I should open it up, 515, 2019, and a bigger site plan for people who can't see like me, dated 515, 2019, which I'm assuming is the same plan, but just bigger.
That's right.
To grant that variance, sorry.
I second the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's conditions, slow your off. Under the two conditions of one...
Actually, three, because the O and M.
Of which one?
The O and M. Operation maintenance plan.
Oh, we want to put that in there? Okay.
Just as a third condition.
I don't remember just...
Or first, depending on...
So O, M, A, O, M, what?
O and M.
O and M.
It'll be, it'll be written out in the decision, I promise you.
Okay. So, the first condition being no major discharge, prior to any major discharge, pool to sit up to 72 hours to ensure the dissipation of chemicals. Condition number two, de-water of any minor discharge to existing subsurface infiltration or new installed drywall. And condition number three, O and M? What am I going to say? Just say to the O and M? Conditions of the O and M?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's good, yep. The applicant shall follow the O and M as, as proposed.
So the applicant, in the condition number three, the applicant should follow the O and M as proposed.
Motion made, is there a second?
I second it.
Now, seconds, we'll go down the line, Mr. Kuscha.
Yes.
Mrs. McIntyre.
Yes.
Alexandria.
Yes.
Mr. Michael.
Yes.
And I'll be a yes as well, so that's, as Simon says, five yeses. And that's, that's how you'll get, you'll get a decision. Valerie, I'm sure you know Valerie well, she'll, I'm sure, follow up with more paperwork questions. We don't do milers anymore, right?
Nope.
No.
So that makes life a little easier.
We did bring one down.
Do you want us to sign it, just in case?
No, that's okay.
Do you want me to sign it? Because I believe in...
She actually has it. Valerie has it.
Brilliant. And that's it, thank you, thank you very much for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you, sorry we dragged you out for this one hearing.
Send you the bell.
That's, it is our job. The last item on the agenda, everybody, is just a chapala letter, dated April 30, 2019. There is no action required of the board, and so therefore, we should entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned, thank you all.